All right, so I'm gonna go through the comments that I drafted for tonight, and then we can go piece by piece through what those line items mean. We did not change that script from our last meeting. What we did is we went back in and dug into those categories that we discussed. But I do want to give a little bit of background. And so the purpose of my update this evening is to discuss ways in which to address the $8 million reduction in funding between the budget from the Board of Mayor and Alderman and the Board of School Committee's tax cap compliant budget, which had been unanimously approved in February. Prior to my full remarks, I want to share some updates from my last review of budget recommendations. At this time, based on the feedback that we heard at the last meeting, and I understand that that position can change through this meeting, we look to restore athletics in the amount of $90,000, $90-plus thousand dollars to continue the expansion of athletics. We look to restore transportation to remain the same as we currently have in place, which means the 1.4 walkout radius, transportation for high school students at no charge, and keeping the tap-on-tap-off system. We look to reduce the number of school-based reductions from 38 positions to 22, as it means to keep our class sizes in line with our policy. Moving along, I want to share the recommendations for reductions to our budget. I want to say again, and I want to be very clear, none of the recommendations, I believe, are in the best interest of our district or support the work we've been actively engaged in for the past few years. I don't want to make any of these cuts, but we are at a place where we have to make decisions to meet the budget. As you all know, we are the largest and by far the most diverse school district in New Hampshire. We are also historically one of the lowest-funded districts in the state on a per pupil basis. That is still the case today despite increased appropriations from the state. One appropriation was due to a formula change in 2024, and the second appropriation was due to an increase in our free and reduced lunch count in 2025. I want to remind all of us, for the '23-'24 school year, Manchester spent $17,733, $733.79 per pupil, which is 3,811 below the state average. In addition, our district has some of the most unique student needs in the state. For example, Manchester proudly serves 2,200 multilingual learners, or 20% of our overall population, with 60 different languages spoken. In addition, our district serves 2,745 students, or 23% of our population, in our special education programs. As the state's largest city, we also bear transportation costs that far surpass any other community in New Hampshire. We provide home-to-school specialized transport for our special ed students and at times McKinney-Vento students, along with transportation for our parochial and charter schools within the city. Even as we brought busing in-house, which saved a substantial amount of money, transportation alone is a $16 million line item in our budget. Our greatest asset, which is also our greatest investment, is our teachers and support staff. Our pool accounts for 68.9% of our total budget. The next closest expense is our facilities and our bonding, which is roughly 10.7% of our expenses. As you can see, that does not leave a lot of play in the system. I'm gonna shift to our expendable trust, or as some say, rainy day funds. As we know, best practices require our district to remain reserves in a trust fund. There are two primary reasons for this. First, we are self-insured, meaning we must always be prepared to handle unexpected costs for health and the well-being of our staff. Second, federal law mandates that we must provide a free and appropriate public education, FAP, for all students who transfer into our district, including students with an individualized education plan, or IEP. As you know, the costs for special education have been increasing, and the impact for even a single student can be unpredictable, and those costs can soar into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. For perspective on our trust funds, the school district's trust fund balance for 11,865 students, 2,000 staff, and 900 retirees is $25 million projected by June 30th of this school year. The city's rainy day fund balance for roughly half the number of staff is approximately $12.8 million, with all city general fund reserves at $31 million. Our auditors have recommended we have at least 10% for a district of our size. Based on our current year budget, our reserve should be at least $23.5 million. For final budget context, over the last six years, the school district has received an average of 1.46% increase in the city budget. This number does not meet the rate of basic inflation, 3.9%, over the same six-year period, which means the higher increase of recent years has gone towards making up the ground lost over a longer period of time. This budget reflects a reduction of 2.4% in tax revenue collected on the school side of the tax rate. Despite the unique challenges we face in our city, Manchester schools continue to offer amazing opportunities you can't find anywhere else in the state. Every day, we hear the rising workforce needed within our community, our partnerships in life sciences such as Army, and the fact that Manchester has been cited as one of the most desirable places to live in the state and in the region. And considering the demand we see for housing, all showcase the need for a thriving and successful public education system. Manchester schools are steadily rising to meet these needs, and I want to share the three prongs of the stool I want to remind all of us. Educational programming: we have sought to vertically align our curriculum; professional development aligned to our curriculum and data-driven student decisions; and most notable, aligning our district policy to reduce class sizes. High-quality staffing is prong two. We've negotiated our contracts to attract the best and brightest, and we are now becoming competitive with surrounding districts. And facilities being that third leg of the stool, our continued CIP projects, and our priority one getting underway. As you all know and have commented this evening, we have seen the results to show the progress from our approach. The four-year graduation rate for our district has increased by approximately 3.54%, while the state's graduation rate increased by 1.66% from 2022 to 2024. Likewise, our dropout rate is falling. Student attendance is rising, and student conduct cases are decreasing. Our college and career readiness data is trending in the right direction, as is our assessment data. When you follow the data and look holistically at the whole child, we are moving in the right direction. Beyond the stats, look at the stories. Our graduates show up, they go to Ivies, they're pursuing certificates in the trades, entering military services, and going straight into the workforce. Our students and staff are being recognized here consistently with numerous awards and recognitions. They are on their move, and their work is being recognized, not only in these chambers but in our community, at the state level, and nationally. As we approach decisions in our budget, I want to caution all of us: we must remember the decisions we make here are about our students, our staff, and our district. The toughest part of this work, of the job that we have in front of us, is what to cut. Our process for developing the recommendations for you this evening was a result of numerous meetings with department heads, principals, community partners, and district leadership team members to find options that protect our students and the programs that we have been striving to implement. At this time, I'm gonna give you a list of the recommendations, and then I will go into detail if you want to go one by one. The first reduction...
I wish we had that.
First recommendation is a reduction in force, a total of 1.4 million or 22 school-based positions. If you recall in the presentation we had last time, we were looking at 38 reductions. We've gone to 22.
Why did that change?
Yep, with those reductions, we sought to protect at the elementary level additional teachers so that we could bring down class sizes in the elementary schools.
That means that most of those losses in force would be at the middle and high school level?
So not necessarily. We've got a lion's share sitting at the middle, not as many at the high school.
Okay, so mostly at the middle school.
Correct.
How do you expect that many reductions to affect class sizes? How big an impact are we talking?
At all levels. So at middle school, when we went through the reductions with the principals, we believe we can keep them under our current class-size policy. Yep, none of this was done in isolation. We did these directly with the principals.
Of those 22 positions, how many of them were previously vacant?
All of these are attrition. They're all through vacancy, retirement, or resignations.
So they were all vacant?
No, they're not vacant.
They're not all vacant. They will be vacant by the end of the year if they're retirement, resignation.
I just need, of those, how many were vacant?
None.
For the whole year? Not many.
None.
Okay, but there was a...
There were some that were vacant.
I'm asking a clarifying question.
Yep. Some positions that we've put on the list have been standing vacant. The teaching positions were not those that were standing vacancies.
But it's not going to increase class sizes?
Right, now, when we worked with our principals going through all of the class sizes and we went through Aspen, we do not believe with these recommendations. With the numbers we have right now, I want to caution us, with the numbers we have right now, we believe class sizes would be okay.
Okay.
Question. So, we're not losing a chemistry teacher, not replacing a chemistry teacher, not off your chemistry?
I couldn't tell you if it's chemistry right off the bat, but what we did is we talked with all the high school principals. They're building their schedules for the coming year and looking at what teachers they need where, and we gave them, here's the number that we're looking at, how would this work within your schedule? They're not there quite yet for me to say it's chemistry or bio. I don't know the class.
I'm just pointing out.
I understand.
If a chemistry teacher is retired, and the only high schools have multiple chemistry teachers, if you're not replacing a chemistry teacher, that's gonna increase class sizes.
It could.
Or you could eliminate certain programs.
Correct.
That are available in science.
Correct.
So that needs to be understood. It's just, this is not a numbers game. This is an expertise game, too.
So let me add to that. So we're also looking at the core curriculum that we need to fill. We understood that we needed to have more science teachers for the coming year, given the state requirements. We're looking into the boutique classes, classes that are 15 and under by policy, and looking at any ways that we can collapse in and make sure we've got all courses running.
Would that affect an advanced placement course?
The 15 and under typically sit in those advanced placement or dual enrollment courses, so it could. We would have to look at ways to collapse in.
So I understand that. So you could lose an advanced placement course? That's what you're saying?
Correct. The reductions have impacts.
This is just not a numbers game when you're scheduling a high school, that you have to look at what programs you lose when you lose key positions. Like if you lost the band teacher, are you gonna cut the band? No, you're gonna hire a band teacher.
Let me just give you an example real quick. You're correct. Let me give you an example. The reductions at the high school are looking at one teacher and one teaching position and one support role at two of our high schools, and then one just has one teacher position. MST has none. We knew that we needed to keep all the positions in that school.
Is there any way we can get that, so we can see this?
Sure. Angela, can you, is it possible to print my agenda?
No, no, no. Her recommendations...
Oh, they're in the...
Page three, right here.
Yeah, that's very gentle.
That's overarching. What it is, Mr. Baines, what it was, it is the packet that we went over last time has all of the detail in it. I just didn't bring that packet back again.
All right, thank you.
Committee member one, I'm sorry, Sol.
The sheet that you gave us originally with all of the reductions...
Correct.
Could you redo that based on going from 38 to 22 so we can see the reduction in class sizes?
Sure.
I think that would be helpful to all of us to have that, so we see, because I'm concerned, of course, elementary. I want to see that we're down to 20, you know, where we should be.
Sure.
I think that might be helpful.
Committee member Sondra.
Yes, thank you. I just had a question, just for clarification. My honor. Thank you, Bob. We talked, I think we spoke at our last meeting, how many staff positions are currently vacant in our middle schools? Because we're talking about moving, or you had suggested possibly moving teachers around to fulfill those vacant positions with the cuts.
Yeah, if you give us one second, I'm looking at Michelle, see if she can count on the list, our current number.
Job vacancies, was it a packet?
Previous packet or this agenda?
When Angela sent it via email.
What she said when Angela sent it via email, but...
Under possible.
At my last count, between vacancies, between retirements and resignations, we were looking at about 68. Now, I will say, that number is constantly in flux as Michelle is taking resignations for the end of the year. But at my last count, we had 68. I kept that number in my head as we were looking at the 38 way back when, knowing that we had a little bit of play within the system.
Right. So when you were talking about 68 potential vacant positions, and we potentially would have to cut 22 staff positions, am I correct in saying that? Is there a way that we can reshuffle when we're already vacant in those positions to fill?
Yes. That's what, so that's the puzzle that I referenced. Last time when we talked about how the 38 positions would work, reducing from 38 down to 22 releases positions back, it's about 12 at the elementary level that we could restore to make sure that we got those class sizes back under control.
Okay. So we're not talking specifically about cutting staff, per se?
Yeah, so I'm not trying to do that in public right now. Two reasons. One, we will go back and work with HR to look at the current resignation, retirement, and vacancy list. We will look at the numbers that we are looking to pull out of each location. We've discussed that with the principals. And then we will go in and look at seniority and all of the bumping for any of the decisions we'd be looking to make. So it's a bit of a complicated puzzle. I understand giving you guys a number on this chart is helpful, however, that chart is gonna be very much dynamic as we go through this reduction process.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, when we're talking about cutting 22 potential staff members, I just wanted clarification. So thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Committee member Spillers.
So we are shuffling, it sounds like some, like Joy was saying. And I'm wondering, though, I know that we're talking about teaching positions, how many positions, like reading coaches or math coaches, are a part of, you know, this attrition that's not happening or that aren't potentially being filled this year?
Yep, so we had two, as we discussed previously, when Ms. Doherty talked about our federal funding that we had to relocate. Two were done prior to us going through the budget process. We're looking at an additional four.
So in total, six people will be cut or shuffled?
They would be shuffled. So they would go back into classroom locations.
Okay, so they would be potentially halftime at one school and halftime at another? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. They would likely go from a coach in math, for example, back to a math teaching position.
Gotcha, okay.
We're losing the coach.
So we're losing the coach, but they're going back into a math position?
Correct.
Or they would be going back into a classroom teaching position?
A teaching position, correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to just reinforce the reason we made that decision. It has been at our core to look at any way possible to keep our class sizes as low as possible, so that's why some of the coaches went up into review.
How do you think that this, or maybe Superintendent Doherty, Assistant Superintendent Doherty can talk about, what kind of effect do you think that might have on our students in terms of getting that extra specialized help, and how that might impact potentially, like, test scores?
So as Dr. Camille said, this is not ideal for any of us. What we were looking at, when we looked at those math coaches, or the coaches that is making sure that we weren't supplanting within that. So that was part of the federal fund process, and we won't be able to have those pieces in there, looking more of those supports in place and looking for other avenues outside the box and being creative to get those students the support they need. So it's gonna be thinking outside the box.
Essentially, at this point in time, the coaches would come from supporting teachers in that structure to back into the classroom. It's not anything any of us want to do, but I would rather keep class sizes as low as we can.
No, understood, and I support that. Thank you.
Committee member Neal.
Thank you, and thank you for going through this in detail with us. I just wanna, as the only sitting board member that is currently a classroom teacher, I just want to highlight a couple of things. Obviously, the most important thing is protecting staff members and positions, but we forget that shuffling people around hurts morale. Shuffling teachers around and telling, and I don't know that this is the case, but telling a high school teacher that they're now teaching sixth grade, that's quite a professional disservice and frustration. And I just think that, again, as Committee Member Baines has said, this is not a numbers game. These are people, these are people in a world where teachers are consistently used as society's punching bag. And then to sit here and talk about, oh, well, we're just shuffling around, it's just a numbers, you know, we gotta save money. Like, these are people, and these are the folks that are most directly impacting our students in the day-to-day. And then just to highlight what Committee Member Spillers is saying about coaches, and again, I want to speak as respectfully as I can about our colleagues on the Board of Mayor and Alderman, but when someone pulls up, out of context, reading scores and math scores, I hope that somebody who sits on both this board and the Board of Mayor and Alderman might remind us all that the loss of coaches is a result of these budgetary decisions. And so as we, you know, have seen our scores continue to grow up, grow at an academically appropriate rate, I don't anticipate seeing that if we lose our coaches. And so I just want all of us here and the public to understand that these small things, these losses, continue to chip away at our student success, at our staff morale, and again, that circles back to students.
Committee member Turner.
Can I just respond to that real quick? I just want to note that we have our HR team, we have members of our teaching bargaining unit who will be absolutely pulled into the process as we get closer to defining what positions need to be moved across the district. Early when these budget discussions happened, I had a conversation with each principal and each department head of, as this starts to land and we get closer and closer to discussions that will have to be had, we need to save place for any person who has moved within our district to land. I have complete confidence in our building-level principals, that they will greet any staff member coming in, welcome them, and get them into their community. We saw remarkable stuff as Wilson had to separate into two locations for this year. And then on top of that, we have HR, who we will go back through and look at what our certifications, what our experiences of those teachers look like, and what those changes might shape up to be. So while I would love to say to you, it's this move, this move, and this move, this will be dynamic until recommendations are settled on, and then we go back and we look at our final lists.
Committee member Turner.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I guess I'm gonna continue to write on this topic, but I mean, I've been on the board for four years, but in the district for a while, and my kids have navigated through our district very successfully. But I applaud you, Dr. Camille, for, you know, seeing the vision in terms of aligning curriculum, purchasing the curriculum. We have a curriculum cycle now where it's reviewed, it's refreshed, and putting in place our curriculum coaches. So we've got, you know, at the district level, we've got Mr. Geodis, Ms. Prue, and Ms. DeLacy, and that's a testament to you, and I applaud that work. And I agree with Committee Member O'Neill, like, that has real positive effects to our students. So I guess if, I mean, if I'm looking at a numbers game, like, I'm looking, and I'm looking at our strategic plan, like, we're trying to grow our systems here, and growing our systems, not only were, did we add, how many students are at our biggest middle schools now, like, over 1,000?
Correct.
So not only have we increased the student body at our middle schools, but now, if we're, I guess I feel frustrated that we would be taking a step back and growing our systems by reducing our coaching at schools where we just added another 250 students, because I feel like those coaches are advancing the curriculum that we aligned and purchased. Those coaches, I know we don't have mentors in our district, but those coaches do act like mentors to our brand-new teachers who are trying to unpack the curriculum and understand it. And there was a reference tonight to not having leveling in our district, and, I mean, if you've been in Hillside, it's a diverse community in every way, including the diversity of learning abilities. And our coaches help our teachers, especially our new teachers, differentiate the instruction so that they can utilize our curriculum to the best of their ability, and our kids can access that curriculum. So I speak for myself only tonight, but I'm not a fan of reducing our coaches. If anything, I'd like to make sure that we have coaches in all of our middle schools to help differentiate the curriculum. I wish Tina Prue were here tonight so she could give us her opinion. I mean, I know it's a shell game, and I don't envy your position right now to say, well, this money needs to go here and this money needs to go there, but I would see the coaches as being pretty essential, in my opinion. So if we're looking at keeping a coach and pausing the growth of middle school athletics, and keep using that example, but it's just a number that I can grasp, like, I would rather do that than to reduce coaches.
Keep in mind, Karen, could you give me a rough estimate of keeping four teaching positions?
So we're looking at 65,000 per position.
Right, and that was the difference of a vote that was tied seven to seven for $500,000 that was ultimately shot down. And so now we're looking at, that $500,000 makes a difference as to whether we have coaches in our middle schools or not. I mean, I feel extremely frustrated, and I don't mean this to be targeted at you, but I would not like to see a reduction in our coaches. I see their value, and if anything, I'd like to make sure that all of our middle schools have their coaches, so that's my personal opinion.
Committee member one.
Thank you, Your Honor. So obviously, we're all very frustrated with the budget. I want to circle back to some of the comments my colleagues on the other side of the room were making earlier about spending one-time funds, because as I look at this, I am, I don't even know what to do with what's in front of me. What I can say is I know that the $8.3 million that we will spend out of one-time funds this year will not be in next year's budget. So not only do we lose it out of the one-time funds this year, but next year, you have to refill that hole again. So it's almost like, honestly, $16.6 million that we are behind right now. And I don't know how next year, like, I believe that Mayor, former Mayor Baines said, you know, he feels bad for the next board and the people, the next mayor, whoever has to deal with this budget, when it gets kicked, this can gets kicked down the road, because that board and that BMA is gonna have to deal with a gigantic hole that may indeed cause catastrophic results in this school district. Because we're not talking about $8.3 million in one-time funds using this year. We have to fill that hole again next year. And that's what happens every year. And I'd just like to ask Mr. Francis if she would maybe comment on that, about how she feels about looking at next year's budget?
Sure, so we are very concerned about it. It is not sustainable to continue to use one-time funds. I think the budget that we brought forward and that the board approved utilized $4.5 million of one-time funds. That was half of what we did in fiscal year '25. The current year that we're in, we utilized $1.2 million of our expendable trust, and also, we had a surplus. We were lucky enough to have a surplus in fiscal year '24 of $7.8 million. So again, we utilized $9 million in our current budget. The budget we proposed utilized 4.5. So our intent was to get off of this one-time spending. So we are very concerned. Looking at our expendable trust balance right now, the report that will go to finance on Wednesday, we are looking at about $24 million by year-end. We do expect to hopefully have about $1 million in interest, which is what we had last year. So hopefully, we'll have about $25 million ending the school year. But again, we utilized, we recommended utilizing 4.5 million in the budget that we brought forward, another $3.8 million that we're looking at now, tonight. In addition to that, during the budget process, we also recommended using $1 million for the curriculum and the technology, which is what we did this year as well, which is really what that Teaching and Learning Trust was set aside for. So looking at all those numbers, we would be ending next year with about $15.5 million. And that's concerning, because again, if we're using $9.3 million of one-time funds in this year's budget, how will we make that up next year? We don't foresee any substantial changes in our revenues. So it is something that we considered when putting this recommendation together. They were not easy decisions, but having the one-time funds available to not impact the class sizes was important to us as well.
Can I get a clarification, Your Honor? So it's a little bit difficult for me to hear, that's my problem, not yours. So it'd be a total of $15 million of rainy day money that we're gonna start the next process in the hole. Everybody understands, I'm sure everybody understands that. Your Honor, I don't want to put you on the swap. What's your reaction to that?
She said we'll have $15 million in the trust at the end of next year.
That's correct.
It's gonna be a hole?
She said we will have imbalance in the expendable trust at the end of next year as $15 million.
Hold on, they told him how we're gonna have what?
We had left $15.5 million, and starting next year's budget, we need to make up $9.3 million of one-time funds. So right going into next year's budget, $9.3 million needs to come from somewhere, or it needs to be cut.
So it's $9 million of a hole that we start building the budget?
Correct. Yes, $9 million that we have to make up.
Everybody at home understands that, and we believe that Alderman understands that. So Your Honor, I'd like to just get your reaction to that, that we're gonna have to start building a budget probably earlier than we probably ever had, and we're gonna start with a $9 million hole. Your reaction to that?
Yeah, this is something we will work through at the appropriate time, at the end of the year when we start to build the budget. Committee member Parr.
Can I finish?
He was next, and then I had you after that.
Okay, that's fine.
Was it continuing?
I just didn't want to follow up.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, you had an additional?
I didn't want to follow up on that because from what I understood earlier, I believe that you, somebody said earlier that, the auditor said that we needed to have 23.5 million in our trust. And I believe that our bond rating is dependent on having that money in the trust funds. So our debt service could go up if we do not have the appropriate amount of money in our, in our trust funds. So next year, if we are at 15.5, that's signi, that's like 8 million dollars less than we should, eight and a half million dollars less than we should have in our, in our trust funds. And I'm deeply worried about not only what it does to next year's budget, but what it might do to our bond rating. And as Dr. Camille said earlier, the staff is our first, our number one expenditure, but number two is our debt service. So if that goes up and with the building project, I'm very worried that when we go out for bonding, that if we don't have that rating behind us because we have the trust funds in place that we're supposed to have in place, that we're going to wind up paying more for debt service. And that will be an even bigger problem. That was what I wanted to wrap that, I just want to finish that thought. Thank you.
Committee Member Par.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say, so we're on this one line item on the reductions there and you can see how impassioned we all are about this one line item there and rightly so, I think, because it is people that we're talking about there. And I just wanted to underscore that I think because of the situation we're in with a reduced budget, it warrants a clear, written out, detailed list of the consequences of that new budget there with justifications there because I think it's, I think we as a board need to see that, to feel that, to own that and to know that that's where we are. And I think that we need to see that in front of us and we, you know, even if it's perfunctory, we need to vote on that in some way because I think it's important for us to really understand the consequence of that reduction there. So I just wanted to put that on the record so that we can get that at a certain point there in writing there because I think it's really important, even more in detail than we had at the last meeting there. And so, and then with regard to the very specific question about coaches, math coaches, reading coaches, interventionists, I think everyone's already underscored how important that is. I know how important that is there. I've done a lot of tutoring, a lot of math tutoring. I know that when I've done math tutoring especially, that students just need to hear something one way in a different way than they've heard it before to have a sudden insight to know that, wow, I can understand that, I can actually do that. No one's ever explained it to me that way before. And those are powerful moments that last for students and really can make such a difference in their lives going forward there. So these are, these are critical, essential positions there. They are consequential and so I think it's important that, that we really consider, is there another way than to cut those positions? Is there another way with the reduction? So I think it's important that we have a proposal on paper that we can discuss and really kind of, I know it's, maybe it's somewhat of an overreach in some ways there, but I think it's so important and it's so predicated on what's happened in the last month that we need to be able to do that as a board.
Do you want to?
I don't know, I don't know how to, if the board wants us to bring back a line-by-line piece of every recommendation, we can certainly do that. I'm just, so far what I've been doing is keeping notes of feedback that we can reflect on once we come out of here. These are our recommendations coming out of the gate. We need the feedback to make any other adjustments. So I wouldn't table yet till we can get through the list and we can take a full accounting.
That makes sense. Vice Chair O'Connell.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, we could, I'm not suggesting we shouldn't or we don't, but we could spend a lot of time on this. What I, what I worry about, to the point that's been made by Committee Member Baines and again by Committee Woman Want, in the issue of next, next year's budget. So what I worry about is that there's going to be a lack, a disassociation between the actions of the current Board of Mayor and Alderman two weeks ago and the consequences to our school district, our teachers, our staff and our city. Because it's going to be delayed by a year or two years. So to put that in perspective for a minute, in, in the last two budgets, this school district is receiving 17 million dollars less than what it would have gotten if you and the Board of Mayor and Alderman had voted for a tax cap compliant budget, a budget that only allowed this school district to spend what the rate of inflation was, just to meet our costs. Your reductions are 17 million dollars for this school district. That's, that's, that's a real number. The consequences for the future of the 9.3. So none of us have a crystal ball, but we've come off a period of inflation. So this year was 4.27, last year was 5.6. So I pointed out, it pains to point out, we got a third of a percent or half a percent last year. Taxpayers got charged a lot more, but that's what the school district got. Next school budget, we're going to be sitting here, let's say inflation, reasonably we can say 2 to 2.5 percent inflation. Let's just, I think that's a reasonable number that none of us really knows, but let's say that's reasonable. That will be about 4 million dollars for this school district. We're going to be sitting here in 11 and a half months from now with a 9.3 million dollar deficit just to tread water. We're going to be saying to the next mayor, whether it's you or somebody else and the Alderman, that's what we need just to break even. And they're going to say, well, guess what, guys? The tax cap is 2.34 percent. We're going to give you all of it. It's the highest amount of money you ever got. Here's your 4 million, work it out. And we're going to have to find, if we do get the full tax cap next year, we're going to have to find 5 million and we'll again listen to Alderman and others in the community and in the chamber telling us that we're profligate in our spending, et cetera, et cetera. So my worry about the process we're going through right now, it's incrementalism, like we're losing positions, we're losing critical positions. If we go into the coaches we're talking about, the only person in an elementary school in Manchester that deals with children who have difficulty reading or something we don't do, but we should be ashamed of not doing, the only person who should be working with students who are gifted of higher capability than their class, that's the coach does that. That person's gone. So we're not getting either side of it. We're now going to go into middle schools where we added 250 staff and we're going to have, we're going to reduce coaches. What I want to say is, since this is going to have a huge effect in the future, I want to know at what point are we going to talk about the actual cuts? Because I don't want to be sitting here in a year and a half and now, a year, a year and a half and now with 150 to 200 reductions in staff and we have pink slips going out and we're decimated and we're an embarrassment to the state like we were in the past. It took us 15 years to get over the action of a previous mayor who allowed 150, 160 staff to go down the road and that's what we're facing. So I would like a more realistic discussion of our budget. I want to know, when are we going from four high schools, schools to two? You can all have opinions about how we get there. We do not need four high schools. I think we all can agree on that, probably. So when are we going to talk about the closure of high schools? Why isn't that on the table tonight? I'm not, I don't know how we get there, Dr. Camille. I honestly, I don't know how we get there. But I just wondered, why isn't that there? Why sports, music and art? Are we going to keep them next year when we're eliminating 150 teachers or not? Because that's the consequences of these folks. Are we keeping the Welcome Center? I know we have it for free, for rent, for, I get that, I know, but you know, we've got staff there. Is that something to be on the chopping block? Should we be talking about more drastic things? We could do what other districts have done. Rather than eliminating staff, maybe we go to a four-day school week? That would be a reasonable response to a city that gives us 17 million dollars less than inflation over 15 months? What about professional development that we so desperately need? Weren't we eliminating every day of professional development? It's a half a million dollars cost to this district. I fully support it and I know we need it, but it's a half million dollars of our budget. Every day, we take our staff, we have our staff doing professional development. These are the, I'm not suggesting any of those things. I would fight to the, to the end, you know, to not lose sports, not lose music, not lose art, not eliminate teachers. But I am worried that we're sitting here tonight and the terrible effects of what looks like a much milder vote, we're saying we're not going to lose, we are actually going to lose it, it's just a matter of when. And if we do nothing else, I'd like an asterisk put at the end of this meeting tonight that I'm sitting here, you know, as the former chair of the Finance Committee who's been looking at this for a long time, and I know my, our current chair is very well aware of it as well, and as the vice chair of this board, we have real damage coming to us in 12 months from now. And I don't want the current Alderman, for good or ill, they make their votes in good faith, then they need to stand beside them in good faith. This is the result of what they're doing to our district. So I don't like the idea that we're going to make a decision on cuts right now based on six page, six line item, not even line item, six words with, you know, the numbers after them. I want to, I'd like to see, I don't see why we need to do that tonight. It would be nice to have an opportunity, as Committee Woman Turner has said, to go in and look at, you know, why are we going forward with the expansion of middle school, middle school sports when we're losing coaches who are going to actually teach kids how to do math and read and write in the schools? So I'll stop there. My big point is, these are, these are, I have to make one more correctional point on a point of order. People have talked about the recommendation of auditors being 10, 10 percent. That is actually not the case. Our auditors, who I have asked on a number of occasions now, taking the opportunity when possible, what do we actually need for reserve funds? There isn't a number. There isn't a trade, an industry number that says you should have 10 percent if you have less than 10 percent and you're in trouble. We did ask the question as we were accumulating these funds in recent years, at what point, like what would be ideal? The ideal is 15 percent. There is no mandated minimum, which there was, but there actually isn't. But good governance would say 15 percent would be a good governance thing to do. When you get below 10, to Committee Woman Want's point, maybe when you get below 10, it affects your, your credit rating, et cetera. But I don't want the word to go out from here that it ought to be 10 and we're, no, no, it not ought to be 10, it ought to be 15. And 15 percent of 240 is 43 million dollars or give or take. So again, this is a serious issue. I'm raising it not for hyperbole, not, not to create drama, but, but this, this decision being made now is going to have huge consequences. We have five groups of teachers and staff who are up for renewal in next year. Nobody's getting any increase next year. We'll have steps and colas, right? But there's no increases. We have fallen to the point where our staff is at now, at least, at least somehow comparable that we're no longer losing teachers because they can earn literally 20 and 25,000 dollars more going down the street. And there is going to be, we're 9.3 in the hole, we may get three and a half to four from the Alderman and we're going to have to find the money to pay 2,000 employees additional money. And I just want to be clear, I want to, I'm going to write, I'm going to write down what I said tonight so I can come back in the year and say, this is the consequence of the bore of Mayor and Alderman of 2025 taking a terrible budgetary decision. Thank you.
Did you have, yeah, Committee Member Bergeron and then Sol.
I guess my question is, it's something that's always on the top of my mind is public relations. So I'm looking at this and I've been able to brag for a few years now about this district and where it's going and where it is now. And now I feel like I'm going to go into this next school year, either just constantly telling people it's going to be okay, it's going to be all right, where I've spent the last four years just bragging about us, like constantly. So I got to say, public relations is, I feel like it's a really important part of this because I think many of us on this board have been here in times of great wealth and not the case. So I guess my point to this is, I don't know if we've ever talked about PR or how we're going to, I don't know, advertise this in a sense, even though it's already out there, but I feel like we still have a lot of positives out there. So I just hope at some point in time that we can get back to another term where we're not having to explain everything, where we can actually just tell everybody what great things are going on. That's it.
Should we move? Committee Member Sol.
Thank you. I've been listening to this conversation and I've been listening to this conversation and what has happened in the past few months is very troublesome to me. However, with that said, this is the hand we've been dealt now. So it's up to us to, number one, get the facts from the superintendent and the consequences. If we lessen the number of coaches, what are the consequences to our students? If we do something with athletics, what are the consequences? So we are not laying the blame game. This is not about the blame game. This is just putting the information out for the community. In addition, asking Karen DeFrances to do the one time so the community has a true understanding of what happens every time we use those one-time funds. And I think that would give us a starting point. And I certainly hear Vice Chair O'Connell with looking at other pieces, but right now, I think we need to do this and we're being very respectful in how we approach it, but this community needs to hear from us, the impacts that these are making on us. So that would be my thought.
So have we finished the first line yet?
So I just want to, I guess I kind of want to move the discussion a little bit in terms of like expressing where I would like to see maybe a reevaluation of how we're changing, like the, or cutting funds, I guess, rather than using so much expendable trust funds because that really does concern me. You know, is there any way that we can, you know, decrease the amount of funds that we're using on repairs and maintenance? Is there anything on there that's not necessarily, it's not like heat, it's not plumbing, it's not something absolutely necessary that we can maybe shift and change away from? And in terms of professional development and things like that, I absolutely support our staff in this, but we're in a really difficult position. I don't know how many days of PD we're, we're giving folks, but perhaps we need to look at reducing that. I do think too, with the, with the expansion of sports, of, you know, it's 90,000 dollars, but that's potentially one to two positions. And I agree that we need to really take a hard look at that and say, is it worth it? I don't think it's worth it personally. Transportation, maybe we don't extend the walkout, but you know, maybe we do something for high schoolers, maybe we extend their walkout. I don't want to see elementary school kids walking two miles to school, but maybe the high schoolers can manage that and we can charge for that transportation or something to try to again, offset some costs. So I'm just trying to move the discussion, I think, into a more practical measure here. I do agree that I would like to see a more detailed line item in terms of the school based positions, an updated one, I guess, not necessarily a more detailed one, but an updated one, to know exactly what those positions are going to look like.
Can we give just a couple of clarifications on the last two comments? So I'm going to have Ms. Doherty talk quick about the coaches, just to give a little bit of clarity into funding and role.
So I want to be clear that the, at the elementary level, we have reading specialists and we have math and reading literacy interventionists. Sometimes those math interventionists more act like a coach, but they are all student-focused that they work at with the students. The only, we've already went through two because of our title of funding, they have to work with students. At the middle school level is where we have the defined with the coaches. We have two coaches at each of the middle schools right now. They are actually instructional coaches, so they work a lot with the different subject areas. They are a little bit more teacher focused, where they provide that professional development, where they go in and work with teachers or they work with the new staff unpacking some of those standards. So that is the difference between when we're talking about coaches. Coaches are mostly, the title is at the middle school. They have to be certified as a math coach by the Department of Ed. Where at the elementary, they don't have that type of certification. It's mostly elementary ed, they are interventionist.
Can we also talk about professional development, where it comes from?
So professional development, for the most part of our professional development comes from our Title II federal funds. Within that, it's not part of our general funds unless it's within the MBEA contract.
And I'm going to have Karen talk to us quickly a little bit about CIP, just to reference the last topic.
You're referring to the CIP for the 6.6 million dollars that we requested for this year, for next year, rather?
I think that's what's up, under discussion, yes.
Okay, so the, so we recommended 6.6 million dollars in CIP funding. The majority of that is deferred maintenance on our facilities and parks and recreation. We also have purchase of buses in there and some information technology infrastructure. The 6.6 million dollars, the debt service on that is approximately 768,000 dollars. That does not impact the fiscal year '26 budget. That actually won't be bonded by the city until the fiscal year '27 budget.
That actually won't be bonded by the city until the fiscal year '27 budget process. So by reducing any of those line items this year, it will not affect the current year, the fiscal year '26 budget.
Yes. Oh, thank you, thank you. So maybe I'd suggest that we maybe have a special committee meeting on this to have further discussion, rather than, you know, a full board meeting. I'm sorry?
Well, finance, I don't have a problem. I mean, I, I would assume that the budget.
I just know, we, we're all having awesome conversation, and you know, just looking at the time, we haven't started our agenda yet. Obviously, this is super important, and we all, you know, want to have resolution and input, et cetera. So I'm all for if we need to do a special meeting or whatever, just suggesting.
Yeah, we do have a finance committee meeting Wednesday night. I cannot vote on these recommendations and the information. I have to see exactly.
Microphone.
What's that?
Microphone.
I cannot vote based upon this information we have tonight. I would have to see specific things that are happening with the budget. We have to accept the fact the budget is the budget, but I need more information. Now, do we do it at finance this week, or is that too quick? Or should it be a special meeting of the school board for all of us?
So we've missed the packet for facilities, or financing facilities. It would have to go to the Board of School Committee on the 27th, would be the next full time we're together?
My recommendation, Your Honor, would be that we have a special meeting of the board just to discuss this, just to discuss. That's my recommendation.
So do you want to make a motion?
In my comment, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we do that as well. But my comment before we do that is that, as chairman of the Finance Committee, and looking at the numbers as closely as I do when we meet with Karen, when I meet with Karen, we are on a collision course with history. We really are. You know, when we talk about cutting back on maintenance, we did that for years. We did it for decades, and the schools were falling apart. They were filthy. Mayor Wazouric had to have the Highway Department come in and clean the schools. That's how bad it was. He had to do that during an election. It wasn't a very pleasant thing that he had to do, but the schools were absolutely filthy. I brought dust balls to a debate that I picked up on a random classroom. Now that's where we're heading for. We were heading for a time when Gil Stadium was falling apart and was about to be condemned because the city would not use its bonding capacity to keep up with school facilities. You have to do that. Short-term gain is a long-term loss when you start putting these things behind it. And you want to see the morale, you talk about public relations, this is our public relations right now. This is the message that's going out there, that we've got to make substantial cuts that are going to hurt the progress that's being made. And the Aldermen who bring up test scores, they need to come in and sit with what's going on, and sit with our leadership and say, go over exactly what's happened with our test scores. You don't change test scores overnight, and you don't change it by yanking funding. Then you'll, you'll get more of the bad results that you want. My goal, and the time I have left on finance, is to start having some serious discussions that Committee Member O'Connell just made. You cannot deal with this amount of use of the rainy day funds and going into a budget, oh, we'll deal with that, you know, during the process. Well, you, you have, when you develop one budget, you have to think about the other. That's what the state does all the time. They think two years. I tried to do that as mayor, and that was a non-starter, because there's so many variables. So this, this is what I'm going to suggest, that we start having discussions about the number of high schools we have. I don't necessarily have any feelings about closing a high school. There's nothing wrong with small schools. They exist all over the state. And what's happening at West High School is almost, I consider magical, that small school that's rising up and being productive. There's nothing wrong with that. But when you have that kind of cut, you cannot have four high schools. I hate to say that. It kills me to say that. So we're going to have to have some tough discussions. Or do we have Central High School with the classical building? Should we be closing the classical building? That, that's how mammoth this issue that's being manufactured for us. And we have to realize, this is a manufactured problem that we're dealing with, and we shouldn't be dealing with it. Should we have got the, the extra 9 million? Probably not. It might have been substantially less than that, but it shouldn't be the number that we were given, because we could have worked hard to make it work. So I move that we have a special meeting to just deal with the specifics of the budget that meets the Board of Mayor and Alderman number, and I'd ask the mayor to accept the motion.
Yeah, I would, I don't have a problem with that. Committee Member Baines, second by Committee Member Sannical. All those in favor?
Hi.
Pose, eyes have it. Did you have?
Well, no, I just, because it's going to impact hiring, I think.
Well, I mean, if we have, but we could have the meeting next week.
Yeah.
Okay.
So by week.
Could I visit that topic? So whatever you've heard tonight, the administration's heard tonight, is in favor of doing the minimum in terms of hiring of the, that you're doing now, right? So I would hope that a reexamination of priorities in the budget are not, because nobody here arguing that we should eliminate more teaching positions or staff positions.
More than the 22?
More than the 22 that you've recommended. So I would hope that this, I agree with this decision to have a meeting on it, but I, this, this should not cause any delay in, in hiring. You should, I think the feeling of this board is supporting the hiring that's already envisioned. The difference would be if the board wants to have a robust conversation about additional programs or something.
Okay.
Because you're right, we don't want to not hire the best people right now.
Right.
When do you think you can theoretically work up paperwork? If we did this meeting one week from tonight?
Sure, so.
I just, I don't, when we get into Monday night, I don't want to hear, I didn't have enough time to go through this. I want to be able to have.
So when were you saying to have it by?
No, I'm just saying theoretically, if it were sometime early next week, do you think, like, something could be prepared by mid, end of the week to give people?
By Friday?
Okay.
This Friday.